All rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening everyone. Tonight, before we start with our visitors and public comment, we have a presentation from the Bucks County Planning Commission, the Bike and Hike Trail Update. Hello, welcome.
Hi there.
Evening everyone, I'm Rich Brailer with the Bucks County Planning Commission. Thanks for taking time out of your meeting to entertain us tonight so we can talk about some issues we've had with our Shammany Greenway Trail.
Don't you mean you're entertaining us?
Well...
Oh, you stay long enough, we'll be entertaining to you.
Okay, that's a deal. As you may know, the Shammany Greenway Trail actually runs from Shawfonte through several municipalities down to the Delaware River. We developed this alignment over the years using feasibility studies and actually hiring consultants that went out there and came up with a preliminary alignment. The alignment we're going to talk about tonight is this area shown in the red circle there. Back in 2016, the county applied for congestion mitigation air quality funding, and we were lucky enough to be awarded about $1.8 million in construction funds. The county itself has put up the preliminary engineering funds. To that end, we hired Boucher &amp; James back in May of 2017 and conducted our first scoping field view in the following month. One of the things about the alignment along the Shammany is there's typically bridges involved just because of the way that the alignment goes back and forth. And we knew that was, could be a potential issue, so we asked Boucher &amp; James to study that area first for us. It's sort of tough to see here. Basically, the alignment we initially received funding for... Is there any lights we could sort of...
Yeah.
Might make that a little better. Okay, well, I apologize. They look good on my computer screen. There you go, nice. Okay. So basically, we're up here right now. This is the Doylestown Municipal Complex area. This is Wells Road, this is Turk Road, this is 611 right here, Alms House Road and Turk Road. This purple alignment is basically what we received funding for. Basically, we had intended to come out of Central Park through Doylestown Township lands, cross over Turk Road, hop onto some county-owned land, and then take a bridge across onto this island area, and then through the island and cross over on a bridge again, and then basically parallel the old Eastern Road alignment, which basically serves as a facility driveway now. And then basically parallel 611 all the way down to the existing trail that comes just south of the driveway for the Shammany Manor home. As we got into the really detailed engineering, we started to hit some snags, some roadblocks. As you may be aware, originally, we had two small bridges coming out of the Doylestown Township land area, and then these two circles here actually represent some pretty large-scale bridges anywhere from 150 to 200 feet in length. And we asked Boucher &amp; James to really seriously look at the cost estimates there because we didn't want to blow the project out of the water just on bridges. And unfortunately, that's basically what happened. We sort of came to a decision that the cost of the bridges is just going to make it too difficult to pursue the entire trail. We also had some other issues. There's some training facilities back here that the county maintains, and there was some sort of pushback on running the trail past that area. We also had some leasing issues. Currently, this area is leased by a third party, and it didn't seem like they were willing to provide any kind of change to it, at least to make this trail a possibility. So basically, we rallied the troops, decided to come up with another alignment, hopefully that still meant the intentions of the CMAC program. And that's what you see in front of you here. This lighter area is the former alignment, and the green area here now is the new alignment that we're pursuing. This area along 611 from Grundy Hall down to the driveway, that's pretty much the same as it was before. But now, as part of the alignment, we're going to go all the way up Alms House Road and make better connections into the parks here at Turk Road. We're also going to provide some connections into the residential areas up here, as well as through the King Park area. The nice part about this new alignment is it ties into an existing sidewalk system, and it actually provides sort of a loop trail, which is a good user experience, so we were sort of excited to do that. We also looked at extending it across 611 down to this blue area. This blue area is actually sort of a Phase 2 to our project that we've recently received funding to do design on that project as well. So by way of comparison, the original alignment was about a mile and a half. We had four bridges, which was sort of making our costs go up rapidly. And of course, when we're dealing with bridges and wetlands and flood plains, that makes the permitting process that much more difficult and time-consuming. This new alignment is actually a little bit longer, about 1.8 miles. It only involves one small bridge, and that's an existing bridge along Alms House that will replace to make it ADA compliant with our new trail. Obviously, there's minimal impacts on this one because most of the area has already been developed. And again, as I stated, it allows us to connect to Phase 2, which is this little section over here. What we've done so far is we have actually got DVRPC and the Federal Highway Program to agree toward this new alignment. They said that it does meet the requirements of the CMAC program, which was a huge step for us because they have specific requirements. Basically, we've taken the show on the road. We went with Warrington staff, Doylestown staff. We met last Tuesday with the Park and Rec Board. Paul met with the Bike and Hike Committee this morning. We're meeting here today, and we're going to see the Dog Park Committee since we're providing sort of a newer connection to that. We got snowed out last week for, yeah, last week for that one. So where do we go from here? Right now, we have Boucher &amp; James basically revising his scope of services so it actually matches our new alignment. Hopefully, they'll come back and say it's a lot cheaper project and save the county a couple bucks that way. According to CMAC, we have to be complete by July of 2019 as far as the preliminary engineering stuff, and hopefully we'll get on PennDOT's construction schedule shortly thereafter. Sorry for the quick update there, but I was told we needed about five or six minutes, so that's sort of where I kept it.
Okay, good job. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. At the Park and Rec meeting when you were presenting this, there was some feedback along the ball fields to put the pass in. I saw they were the same colored line that you had for the rest of the trails. Did you decide to do that now?
Are you referring to this section here?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, and unfortunately, those lines are probably way bigger than the trail would ever be. But yes, the intention is to move the new trail basically behind, closer to Warrington's side of the field, because apparently there's an issue with people sitting along the trail and too much interaction with the ball field users. So yes, that's part of our new design.
One of the other feedback was from the Dog Park path down to Turk, whether or not you needed to do that, and then along the frontage of Turk as well. So is this pretty much the plan you're going to stick with then?
I mean, it could change a little bit as we design it. The thought right now is to actually pave that section in green there and provide that connection. This part here is actually not on the road itself, because as we met with our consultant and had a discussion, the thought of putting cars and trail users on the same path is not a good idea. So this would actually be a new trail that would parallel the road up to the Dog Park and then back onto the path where it would be paved.
Good, thank you.
Sure.
What is your plans for pedestrian and bicycle crossings?
They'll be fully developed crosswalks, whatever the design consultant comes up with. Were you looking for more than that?
Well, we're having a discussion, was it, I think in the very near future with the Bike and Hike Committee about our trails.
Okay.
And what we'd like to see established there.
Okay.
I'd like to see some conformity if at all possible. If it was up to me, and you're crossing a state highway, which Alms House Road is, that it'd be some type of flashing beacons.
Okay, you mean like right in this area? Yeah, we can certainly have our... It has to be warranted, that's the only consideration, I will say that. And then, and there is a certain cost associated with that, so those have to be looked at from a cost feasibility standpoint. Thank you.
Could you fix that with chirping, burby, birdy things like they did with Grundy and...
Well, Grundy's got a...
No turn on ride.
Right, that's a dedicated push-button crosswalk.
Right. Could you do the same?
That's ultimately what I would like to see in all of them.
Yeah.
I mean, you're encouraging people to cross a highway. And with, you know, the easier we make it, the more it's going to happen, the more chance there is for accident, my concern. We definitely feel your concerns, absolutely.
Thank you. Anything else, any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Brailer.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. I'll see you Monday at the Dog Park.
Okay, good.
Can't wait. Okay. Any visitor or public comment? You're going to leave now? We're just starting to entertain you.
Yes, just starting.
Ah, well, welcome. You're the new Lynn Bush.
I am.
Taller than Lynn Bush.
And Evan was the designer, he worked for the company that designed Central Park.
Oh, excellent. Excellent. I'm sorry, Ed, that he's not on a mic, but we're just talking to Evan Stone here, Executive Director of the Planning Commission. Thank you. All right, hearing the visitors' public comment. Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, February 6th at 4:00 p.m. The Pension Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, February 6th at 2:00 p.m. Movie and ski tickets are available through the township at discounted prices. For more information, contact our administrative offices or go to Doylestown PA, DoylestownRec.com. Christmas tree drop-off at the New Britton Road entrance to Central Park between now and the end of, well, February 10th. Doylestown Township Park and Rec, in partnership with Premier World Discovery, is hosting two trips in 2018 of Great Trains and Great Canyons and Treasures of Ireland. Contact the administrative offices for brochures and highlights and inclusions. Year-long bicentennial events and celebrations can be found at Doylestown website. The next event will be Tuesday, March 13th. Dr. William Edgar Guile, as you were just mentioning before the start of the meeting. History evening at Delaware Valley University begins at 7:30 p.m., a not-to-miss event. Minutes approval is the next item on the agenda for the reorganization meeting on January 2nd, 2018. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any changes, corrections? Hearing none is our motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. All right, correspondences. We received a beautiful citation from Senator McElhenney. I'm going to ask Ted Herring to read it for our viewing audience, and it's a lovely citation, so it's worthy of a good reading.
All right.
Microphone.
There we go. Here's a citation. Whereas the Senate of Pennsylvania is always pleased to recognize those exceptional municipalities which contribute to the heritage of this great Commonwealth, and whereas Doylestown Township is celebrating the momentous occasion of its 200th anniversary, and whereas located in Bucks County, Doylestown Township is located on a tract of land which was originally gifted to William Penn. Its name was derived from an innkeeper, William Doyle, who operated Doyle's Tavern during the 1700s. During that time, the town consisted of a few families living in log houses, a blacksmith, and a store. On May 11th, 1813, Doylestown held its first court session, and it became the county seat. In 1814, the residents petitioned the judges of the Court of Quarter Sessions to establish the Township of Doylestown, which occurred in 1818. The new township consisted of the town of Doylestown, several local villages, and parts of three neighboring townships. And the first election of township officials was held on March 19th, 1819. Throughout its history, the Township of Doylestown has contributed mightily to this Commonwealth and its citizenry, and has truly become a proud part of Pennsylvania. Now therefore, the Senate of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania heartily congratulates Doylestown Township upon its special occasion, offering best wishes for every future growth and success, and directs that a copy of this document sponsored by Senator Charles T. McElhenney, Jr., be transmitted to Doylestown Township.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator McElhenney. Appreciate that. Good reading, John.
Thank you.
Take care. Reports from the solicitor.
Nothing.
Chief?
Yes, senior packet is a request that the board appoint the fire companies, fire police for 2018. They did not have their reorganizational meeting until first week of January, so it was unable to get put into your packet for the RV reorganization meeting as usually is passed. I'd like, I just need a motion and approval for them to be appointed for this year.
I must. Is there a motion to approve the fire police, as detailed in the chief's memo?
Motion to approve.
Questions, visitors? Second? Second by Ms. Herring. All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Engineer?
Nothing to see there.
Okay, Pecado requests for resolutions. Will these, our resolutions that we pass be part of this request?
If we, yes. If we have any resolutions that we would like to put forth for the convention on February 17th, they're looking for us to have it to them by February 2nd.
How about the ones that we've already just, you know, that we support that were requested from PSATs, or they're already automatically...
They're automatically part of it at the convention.
Do we have any other resolutions that you can think of?
No.
No, anybody?
No.
What's our deadline?
February 2nd, I believe.
Well, let's think about it, and if anything comes up, we'll let me know. Let Stephanie know. Let somebody know. Stephanie? Okay. Pecado Annual Convention. You all got your invitation? Right, so respond to...
Just respond to Jackie.
Jackie, whether you intend on attending. Director of Operations Municipal Complex, Phase 1 Locker Proposals.
Yes, we solicited proposals from CoStar contracted firms. Those are firms that have already responded to contracts on the Pennsylvania State Contract System, and were awarded contracts in which we can purchase because we are members of CoStars. With the help of Mary Senior, our interior designer for Phase 2, we solicited proposals for lockers for the Public Works Building for the locker room. You have a proposal in front of you to, and a recommendation to award the, or to purchase through the CoStars contract, and the proposals are in front of you for the purchase of 18 lockers. Basically, they're freestyle personal storage lockers manufactured by Space Saver, supplied and installed by Diversified Storage Solutions of Norristown PA. And the quote, "The proposal dated January 12th, 2018 totaling $27,235.2."
Okay. This is within our budget?
Yes.
It's proposed already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's important to know. Any questions about the proposal? Is there a motion to approve the proposal?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Did you have something else, Mr. Tomco?
Yes. I have a change order for Phase 2 as well from the plumbing contractor, Stan...
Phase 2 or 1?
I'm sorry, Phase 1. Phase 1. Plumbing contractor, Stan Rock Plumbing. This was basically a change to the construction in the Public Works Building. When we were constructing the lockers, it was discovered that to connect the new locker room to the existing drainage system, sewer system in the lower level, that there would need to be a minor change to the location of the plumbing stack. And when the, we excavated to tie that into the existing line, it was determined that line was corroded because of years and years of use, and it was an old cast iron pipe. So basically, our Public Works staff was utilized to expose that pipe, and we worked with the plumber to have the plumber install it, since they're certified to do that and they're on site. So there was a cost savings to utilize our staff to dig it up and then to repair the floor, the concrete floor. So there's a change order in front of you for an amount of $1,900, or $1,095.90 for that change to be awarded to Stan Rock.
Sounded like a fortuitous mistake. Find that...
Sooner or later, it was going to break.
Find that pipe.
Sooner or later.
That was going to be a big mess.
Right.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve that change order?
Move to approve.
I'll second it, I just have one question.
Please.
How do you come up with the order numbers? You have 1-1-1, is it how many for that phase? Or is it each contractor? How do you come up with change order 1, 2, 3?
Well, yeah, it is. Now, we have five prime contracts, so each contractor starts, you know, basically change order 1, 2, 3 in sequential order. They're basically submitted by the contractor and approved by the architect, so they kind of start the numbering system, we just follow it. So yes, this is the only change order from the plumber on their contract, though we've had others for other purposes.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I was actually, do we have a listing of the change orders?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I will update that and have that out to everybody with this addition made, so that you can see that. Based on what I've looked at, our numbers, we are just shy of 4% in change orders from the original contract price to where we are with this change, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, I will publish that.
All right, motion is second, all in favor? Have the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then, we have one other thing, Mr. Tomco.
Yes, this is for Phase 2. This is Construction Inspection and Testing Services Proposal. Rob Galant from JD Bravo Company, our construction management firm for Phase 2, solicited proposals from four qualified firms for construction inspection testing services for the municipal complex demolition phase and Phase 2 construction, which is the Police and Administration Building only. On December 1st, three proposals were received from Earth Engineering, Panone, and Underwood Engineering and Testing Incorporated. Based on Mr. Galant's recommendation in my review of the proposals, is recommended that we award the inspection testing services to Earth Engineering Incorporated for a time materials contract and for the demolition and Phase 2 construction.
Any questions?
Yes, I have two questions. Is this, is this type of testing services, is that normally a time and material versus hard contract dollar amount?
No, because if you notice, the proposals that were received, some were basically half-day rates or full-day rates. And for, actually for Panone provided us with a full-day rates for their services, Underwood provided half-day and full-day rates. It just happened to be that Earth Engineering supplied hourly rates for us.
Okay.
So, and that's part of the recommendation, is the why is because obviously it'll be time and material based on time on site.
Good.
And who's going to be on site to time them?
That's the responsibility of the site superintendent, which is part of the general contractor's responsibility, and also Mr. Galant.
Okay. I'm going to stay on these people who get paid by the hour. Okay, I'm sorry, was there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor of the award to Earth Engineering?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tomco. Supervisors. We'll start down there. Anything else?
Just quickly, at the last TAB meeting, it was discussed about the emergency messaging. We are still working through that. We'll be meeting, we're putting a meeting together towards the end of this month. We're just trying to work out the date, but we're still working through our plan for emergency messaging within the township. And the other thing is, in terms of our content through TAB, one of the things that we really want to push in 2018 is working with other boards and commissions to help provide the content. EAC is a great example of a commission that has done a really good job in helping to provide content. Bike and Hike is starting to get into that a little bit, but we're looking for everyone to kind of play a part in helping to generate the content of what's happening within the township.
Bicentennial.
Bicentennial, yes.
We should have our own, like, Facebook page or something.
No, you don't want another Facebook page.
I think we should have our own dedicated internet service.
We should have livestreamed the gala at the Doylestown Country.
That was so much fun.
So, are you looking for more content for the emergency management system?
No, 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 that was separate.
Okay.
So, emergency messaging, we're working through what the plan is, but just for TAB in general.
Okay.
We need, we need help generating the content.
Yes, got you, thank you.
Well, you all got it.
Okay.
All right, isn't there a meeting date planned for that, or a date planned for that meeting?
I think we're still waiting to finalize that date. There was a bunch of emails going around, so...
All right. All right, thanks. Anything else, Mike?
That's it.
Rick?
None of my commissions met since the last board meeting, so unfortunately, they didn't get the chance to. I mean, I didn't take it as personal affront, there were no meetings scheduled, so...
Okay, so you're done?
So that means nothing?
I'm done.
Nothing else to say?
You can just say no.
You want to read the proclamation?
Proclamation again, if you want me to do that.
No.
I'm amenable to that.
Never mind.
No show of hands, I see, so go ahead.
Ken, you got anything?
No, Madam Chairman.
Ms. Herring?
Yes, I met with a couple of people involved with the Central Buck Senior Task Force since the last meeting, and they had made a request to change their meeting dates. I'm not sure if we need to do that officially, I guess we do. So, I guess I'll read them to you so they can get put in the minutes for change, and do we, do I make a motion for change?
How do you want to do that, Stephanie?
Just publish it.
I think it's a motion.
Yeah, you need a motion, you need a second, you need approval, and then they need to advertise.
Okay. So I guess I'll make a motion to change the dates for the Central Buck Senior Task Force to February 5th, March 5th, April 2nd, May 7th, June 4th, October 1st, November 5th, and December 3rd of 2018.
At what time?
They will remain at the 1 o'clock meeting time at the Senior Center.
Okay. Is there a motion to...
She made the motion.
She made the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have to advertise, and then they'll probably be good to go.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on to, where are we? Public hearing on the cleanup ordinances. Now, there was a, there's a bunch of stuff in these cleanup. There's the building construction, nuisance, park and rec, lots about park and rec, sewers, stormwater management, the bike and hike path, remote control devices. The one that, I think the only one that's of issue right now is the firearm ordinance, and I spoke to Mr. McGinnis before the meeting, and he has a quick fix to it with Section 4, which appears on page 2 of the cleanup ordinance packet. Now, these were all advertised. My question is if we delete Section 4, which will make this, which will be, make it consistent with our current ordinance, do we have to re-advertise?
No, we will not need to re-advertise if the only amendment is a deletion of Section 4.
Okay. And the reason why we recommend, or at least we discussed deleting Section 4 is because you can carry a firearm in Central Park, but you cannot discharge one. And we want to make sure that that is consistent, it reads now as inconsistent with our current ordinance, so if we remove it, go ahead.
Right. So, the township is well within its rights to restrict the discharge of a firearm within any public park. It's most likely not within its rights to restrict the ability to carry a firearm.
No, we don't have that.
Right. So, if the proposed ordinance just has an amendment to, in essence, delete Section 4, then we can clean it up and provide a new copy.
Okay.
I just have a quick question regarding that. So if the, if it, if you can carry a firearm, but you can't disarm it...
Discharge.
Discharge it.
Yeah.
So, let's say, you know, I may, I have a carry permit, I'm in the park, and I'm attacked, and I use my gun, because that's clearly why I'm carrying it. Like, are you liable then? Like, are you liable, then? Like, is that-
You violated an ordinance, but I don't know that if you're criminally liable. Chief, you want to respond to that?
I would respond to that, as you're allowed to defend yourself.
Yeah, like, I mean, I just-
Civilly, you might have violated the ordinance.
Got it.
Criminally, you're probably within your right to discharge it. What do you think, Chief?
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Provide your legitimate purpose.
Sure. Do you agree with that, Mr. Solicitor?
Yeah.
I don't quite understand what's being amended and deleted, to be honest with you, because our current ordinance, Section 119-9A, states, "Other than an officer of the law, no person shall discharge a firearm, rifle, or other weapon within the park system." We agree with that, correct?
Right.
Right, so in essence, the current ordinance would remain unchanged.
Okay.
This cleanup ordinance was inconsistent with it.
Okay, but the cleanup, so the cleanup ordinance is wrong, is that what you're saying?
Yes. We're gonna change it.
We're gonna delete Section 4, add it, pretend like it never occurred.
Correct, it'll be eliminated.
All right.
That's the point. Okay? We're all good?
Yep. So, the intent wasn't to add back the ability to carry. My understanding was that the Pennsylvania Supreme Court allowed, or actually did not, does not permit, does not support having private organizations be able to sue municipalities.
So, I think what you're referencing is a 2016 Supreme Court case called Leach v. Commonwealth. And what Leach v. Commonwealth did was basically, the legislature passed, I think it was House Bill 80 in 2013, which authorized a third party to sue a municipality with respect to firearm ordinances. Leach held that that particular House bill was unconstitutional, but it did not hold it was unconstitutional on substantive grounds. What it found was it was unconstitutional because the bill was combining the, I think it was the municipal firearms legislation with Act 192, which related to penalties for theft of copper and aluminum. And they held that the act of actually combining those was what was unconstitutional, not necessarily the substance. And in fact, the Commonwealth Court in December of 2016, so after this case was decided, in firearm owners against crime versus Lower Merion Township, actually granted a preliminary injunction in an exact same case where Lower Merion Township restricted the carry of firearms in a public park. So, near as we can tell, and Mr. Garten and I analyzed these cases this morning, the township actually does not have the authority to restrict the carry of a firearm still as we sit here today.
Thank you.
Yes, that's pretty good. Synopsis. All right, is there any question about what we've just talked about? Is there a motion to approve the cleanup ordinances as they are, with exception of Section 4, which we would delete?
I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
My first question was, and you'll have to forgive me, because I wasn't here when these were originally put through, but I was wondering if there was any background on the building construction, the Section 1? Is that, is it because of a redundant ordinance? We're deleting Chapter 65 building construction.
That came from Sinclair, our code enforcement director, and compliance with the building codes and everything like that, so.
I think there's a new building code that was implemented that, which made this redundant.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's a Pennsylvania, the Pennsylvania code, we're just, okay, following along with So, there was another one, the Section 14, Chapter 19, Parks and Recreation Areas, Section 11913, Application for Permissions to Use Facilities. It said to delete the term athletic field/park, and when I was reading through that, and I certainly hope I printed that out, it sounded odd.
Well, they want to use the word facility instead of athletic field/park.
Yeah, it did, I don't think it had the word facility in there.
It appears in Section 15.
Section 15 says, "Replace it with facility."
Okay.
14 was delete. So, they're removing it and then replacing it with-
But this is subsection 13.1B. This is Section 13.1A, so it did read well on the, on the Section 15, but the Section 14 amendment read. Do you have the original one in front of you? Any chance?
No.
No.
It seemed consistent at the time, I don't have it, I don't have this in front of me, so I can't really speak to it.
Okay. Yeah, those are recommended through, again, our Parks and Recreation Director, and she's been through this a couple of times.
Similarly, we have, oh, so, Section 26, Chapter 148, Stormwater Management. The prohibited discharges shall be amended to delete the water from individual residential car washing, so that is in essence saying that that is not an accepted use of water? Am I reading that properly? Mario, you went over this last time.
It's just the opposite.
You get this one, Mario.
The opposite.
It's deleting it.
It means you're allowed to wash your car in your driveway.
Okay, all right.
The way it was, you weren't allowed.
All right, so I was reading that backwards, thank you.
Yeah, it gets confusing. Anything else?
Um, yes. In Section 22, there is wording that says that no person shall possess or operate radio-controlled or remote operated model, et cetera, et cetera, except in connection with township-sponsored programs and events. Does that mean as part of the official township or during? So, say we have the fireworks event that goes on in July, does that permit individuals to put their drones up in the air at the time?
It does not.
It does not, it has to be official.
It has to be a township-sponsored drone event.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm assuming Section 23 about the plumbing is another redundant code, and that's why it's being eliminated. Okay, that's it.
All right. Madam Secretary down there, where were we on that? Is there a motion to approve and second?
I don't think there was a motion.
Is there a motion to approve the cleanup ordinances, except for Section 4, which will be deleted, otherwise in their entirety?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, good job there. New business authorization to advertise ordinance amendment, greeting Pension Advisory Committee. Now, I don't think this is good to go yet. My problem with this is that there are too many names of what this is going to be, and as Steph and I talked about, talked before the meeting, this ordinance has to include a reference to both committees in our ordinance currently. There's the Uniform Employees Pension Plan Committee, and then there's the Employee Pension Plan Committee, two separate ordinances. Uniform, one of course is for police, the other one is for the non-uniform. So, this ordinance itself has to at least reference those two current existing committees. Now, the intent of this ordinance is to create an advisory board or advisory committee that would help us and these two entities, the Pension Plan Committee for Uniform and the Employee Pension Plan, help us to, you know, become smarter about pension plans, you know, get better and get on top of it, you know, look for-
Make recommendations.
Make recommendations. And I think that's a good purpose here. My, like, my problem is that first, I think this ordinance has to reference those two current ordinance or current existing committees in the current ordinance, and also come up with one name, there are a bunch of names in here. And I know Mr. Colletlo, and I don't disagree, has issue with that non-residence could be member, could be members of this, you know, pension plan advisory committee. So, those are my concerns. I'll throw it out to you guys.
I agree with everything, and I also, I mean, just based off of the individuals that put this recommendation into place for this committee, who went, went in with limited knowledge on pension planning, and by the end, taught me so much, I, I think that there is enough talent within Doylestown Township, you know, and I think that it's worth starting this committee by saying we're looking for Doylestown Township residents. I think, you know, it also, it means something when people are living in this township and they have a vested interest as well. So, I would recommend that we, we look for Doylestown Township residents for this.
Okay, just so you know, that the current committees that exist for the uniform and not, not that this-
Yeah.
The, for the uniform and non-uniform, allow non-residents on those committees. What we're saying is the one, the one we're creating should be township residents.
Correct.
Okay. Just so you know.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying.
Not that there are non-residents on those committees, because there aren't.
Understood, yeah.
But the two representatives from the uniform and non-uniform are not township residents.
Yeah, but that makes, that's different, because they have a special designation.
Because I think in the old ordinance, this is going way back, they had to be residents as well, and that was part of the change.
But this says-
I know.
This says something different.
Yeah.
So, the only change to the proposed ordinance would be that they, that we're going to be looking for those other three people to be township residents.
Correct.
Right, and that we're eliminating it to two supervisors.
No, you're not. You have two supervisors, two employees, and three members at large.
Correct.
Who should be township residents.
Yes.
Right, but it's two supervisors versus five, that's, that's-
Oh, there's only just, oh, yeah, well, that's, the pension board has five supervisors. We're talking about two other committees that exist, believe it or not.
No, they're not. We're talking about replacing the board with this committee.
Which is really the pension, it's the same committee.
Replacing the pension board?
Yes.
With this? I didn't think that was happening.
That's what this was intended to do.
That's the ordinance that you have now, it's the Pension Plan Committee that you have now.
The pension board that we meet every, twice a year.
Twice a year.
Is going to be replaced by this?
Correct. That was, that was the proposal.
No, 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 no. This is supposed to be an advisory committee to that board.
From what I understood, it was to take the place of it.
Yes, if you go back and look at the proposal, it says it will replace the pension board.
Huh.
That's what their proposals state.
Hmm.
That's their recommendation.
I didn't see it that way.
Yeah.
There was, I think there was some back and forth, if I'm not mistaken.
I just, I spent, because I, I spent a couple hours with them on the phone, kind of going over, so that is what they were looking to do.
Did you understand that before you spent a couple hours on the phone with them?
No.
No.
No, 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 no. It wasn't before that, but once I walked away, I was like, okay.
Well, I'm not sure I want to do that, frankly. I don't think I want the board to lose control over that. I don't mind an advisory committee to the pension board.
Well, I think, the way I read this, Barbara, I understand what you're saying, and I-
You got, you got two supervisors and three quote "experts," that's what we're supposed to have on the, and the uniform and non-uniform rep.
To be an advisory committee to the pension board.
Essentially, it's taking three of us and replacing three supervisors with township residents that could, that have some sort of expertise in pension.
Who's going to be making the decisions about the pension plans?
It's those five people.
No.
No, boards.
It should be, it would be recommendation to the board of supervisors.
They're going to recommend it to this board, we have final say, right?
They're going to make a recommendation to the board of supervisors.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm just saying that that was their intent, from what I understand, their intent was that-
You're exactly right.
They made those decisions, like, they were the pension board, it wasn't, they made a recommendation that essentially came to us. They governed like a pension board.
Huh.
Well, it says the committee shall recommend the adoption of rules and regulations for the official admin, recommend-
Okay.
-to the board of supervisors of the township. I'm reading that is, we still have final say.
Right, of course.
Well, we, yeah, so, yeah, I'm not saying that I don't, I agree with that.
There was some confusion with this, and I bounced back and forth a few times, too.
Well, no, I didn't see this, I thought this was, all right, never mind. I don't, I don't know what I think about this now.
Well, we're not going to advertise it, so we got, wait till next meeting before. If you can't advertise it, it's too messy.
It's too messy. All right.
Well, we got the Ways and Means Committee coming up.
Yeah, let's talk about this.
So, we'll take it back to them.
I'm not sure I want to relinquish control.
It's in the draft as well.
Well, I mean, if the final, if the final say comes down to the board, we're not necessarily relinquishing control, you know?
I understood.
You know, you can, you can still have the advisory committee, and if you want them to report back to the board of supervisors, because they're meeting twice-
Well, they'd have to be an advisor committee.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You could still have the board of supervisors, you just removed the pension committee.
Can I ask a question?
Pension board, yeah.
The pension board as it exists today, do they have voting powers?
Yes. Well, yeah, because it's us.
It is my understanding that what you're trying to accomplish here is replacing that with people that do not have, three people are replacing you guys. So, if the current board has voting power and can dictate policy, that's what this new group will do. So, yes, you will be cutting out three of yous.
But at the same time, the current pension board, made up of the five supervisors and the two employees, make recommendations to the board of supervisors.
So, we make recommendations to ourselves?
For example, like, the MMOs.
That's right.
The pension committee recommends to the board the MMOs.
Here's, here's, here's what I will say. Walking through that process last year with the committee that they set up, they put so much time and brought back really thoughtful approaches.
I agree.
And the fact is, is like, three of us can't sit down in a room by law and work through stuff like that. Like, I feel bringing in other people, if ultimately we can, if we have people that are passionate, have, you know, can really come up with innovative approaches, like, I loved what they came up with, and-
I agree.
And I don't want to stymie that to say all five of us need to be on a pension board. If we can craft it in a way where ultimately, they, it's more of a pension board that brings recommendations to the board of supervisors.
It should be no different than what any other committee does.
Right, no more power than that.
Right.
They're just advisors.
Right, right.
So, but you are eliminating the pension board?
Correct.
Replacing, I think.
Replacing.
No, you're eliminating it, and you're, yes, okay, you're eliminating it, but you're replacing it with a committee, advisor committee.
You're shifting some of the roles and responsibilities out of the pension board, some will stay with the board of supervisors, because they make the decisions, and also at the pension board made, came up with recommendations, so that the pension advisory committee is going to do. So, it's not that, you're getting rid of a group that you're replacing, who's going to be doing the same roles that the board did between the supervisors and the advisory. You're losing nothing.
So, that group is going to be listening to Deborah Brady.
Correct.
Yes, and they want to. That's the point.
That, that's what I'm saying, like-
That's the point.
My head just stopped spinning.
And I will, you know, I mean, a lot of it is, like, I will say, six years in, I still sit there, and she talks, and I'm like, what? Like, I don't, I don't, half the time, I don't even-
Fifteen for me, I still don't understand what she's saying.
And I was able to sit down with that pension group that put those recom, and I sat down with them for two hours, and I walked away, and I'm like, oh, I get it now, so, just, you know, it opened my eyes to-
Just ask her how much her fees are, and see what happens. Just ask her how much her fees are, and see what happens.
I don't want to ask her.
Okay, it'll be, it'll be six weeks before you get an answer. Okay, can, can we, can I have a motion to table this, so we can clean it up a bit?
I'd like to make a motion to table the.
Second.
Okay, in principle, okay, all in favor of the table? In principle, I agree with what we're, what we're planning to do here.
Okay.
All right, so, thank you for taking the time to explain it to my head. All right, where are we, where are we next? Appointment of fire, well, no, we already did that, yeah. Treasurers' Report for January 16, 2018, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Approving the Treasurers' Report for January 16.
I'll make a second one.
All in favor?
Aye.
And you had the opportunity, I hope, to see the bills list as well, online, January 16, 2018. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a question. On the preface, there's a check for Salem United Church of Christ, is that the dog park? Is that the training?
Yes, that's for rental.
Park and Recreation Rental of the, for their facilities.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, the dogs are meeting at the church. All right, calling the question on the bills list, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next meeting on this board is Tuesday, February 6 at 4:00. The pension committee, soon to be, the current pension committee is meeting Tuesday, February 6 at 2:00, maybe our last one. Movie and ski tickets are available through the township at discounted rates, so go to